There we go. The October 15th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Just a brief announcement about open podium invitation. It's an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting, typically which occur on the first and third Tuesday of each month. From 6:30 to 6:55 is the open podium time here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (952) (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getcho, we have, I guess, a couple here donations tonight?
We do. We have one for Parks and Recreation and then one related to our Crime Prevention Fund, so Mr. Lauthammer can handle the first one.
Your honor, council members, the first one is a $225 donation from Summit Place. It's towards the holiday lunch at the senior center, and this is an effort to keep it more affordable for our seniors, and we really appreciate Summit Place, they've been involved in quite a few other events this year as well as this donation, so we really appreciate their support and being in the community.
Great. Sir, a motion to adopt the resolution accepting this donation.
Adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $225 from Summit Place to go towards holiday lunch at the senior center.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Getcho.
I guess, Mr. Lauthammer, you're going to handle this as well?
Yes, sir. Council members, this donation is $750 from the crime fund, and it's towards Halloween on the Mall event, and this is really police, fire, Parks and Recreation, along with the mall and many of the store owners at the mall, provide an opportunity for people to come inside on that night and do their trick-or-treating. It's about 8,000 people that go through here. We've been doing it for quite a long time. Lisa Toomey is here tonight, as you can see, in the very back row there, representing the crime fund, and we really appreciate all that they do to help out these and other programs like safety camp and obviously the things that they do for the police as well. So appreciate their contribution, and October 31st, it's from 5:00 to 7:30 at the Eden Prairie Mall. Lots of kids in costumes.
Lisa, did you want to come up and make a statement of any sort? No.
Crime Prevention Fund.
It's the Crime Prevention Fund.
Have a big check for us?
So let the minutes reflect that, and the motion should reflect that, to the Crime Prevention Fund. Correct?
It does say.
It does in the item, but in the motion, you want to say Crime Prevention Fund in the motion?
So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $750 from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund toward the Halloween on the Mall event.
Great, sir. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, moving on.
Can I bring up one comment?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Just, you know, it has been this year, this is our 12th donation, and before these two items, I think we received around $53,000 to the cities. I just want to highlight that, and so many people kind enough to support us in many ways, like seniors and parks and lakes and different things happening in the city, so it's very important, so we want to encourage more people doing that, it would help us, our city, make better.
Well said.
So I just want to highlight that.
Thank you. It really helps our tax dollars go further, so it's very appreciated. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Well, before we do that, are there any council member reports or any additions to the agenda tonight before we make the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to bring something up.
What? Do you just want to give me the agenda item, and then we'll throw it onto the agenda?
Well, the agenda, let's call it regarding what we can do down the road of distressed properties.
Okay. Any other items to add to the agenda? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, any questions or concerns about any, either of the council member minutes? Either the workshop held on Tuesday, October 1st, or the council meeting?
I would move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, and the city council meeting held Tuesday, October 1st, 2019.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, consent calendar. Any items to question in any way or ask for clarification? I wanted to raise just one, and that's under B. I don't want it pulled, but it's the Highland Oaks Project, and many of you, as I, have likely received either emails or maybe a phone call or two about all the tree loss up on the top of that hill, and just wondering if that was what was expected, and my understanding is yes, that's exactly what we approved, and I wondered if either staff has had the chance to go out and just verify, validate, just check, and/or, I'm sure they plan to, just to assure our residents that we know what's happening. In fact, we believe some trees that were saved that we're not, we weren't sure at first, and the large heritage tree did get saved, as well as two additional, I believe. But anything else that we could have as validating information?
Sure, mayor, I can comment. You hit on the one point, and that's in the packet, that a big piece of discussion during first reading was saving a heritage tree or two, and so you see that the developer was able to do that, and so the city's very pleased with that, the neighborhood is pleased, and yes, I can't say, you know, at this moment today, if our staff has been out to verify that the removals fit exactly what the plans show, but we do do that, and we will verify that.
Sure. And just a note, too, that the developer's agreement also had replacement trees to our code, which are a lot. We replace a lot of caliper inches, and for the sake of, again, our residents, just at the workshop this evening, we had an association that is over 20 years old come in with concerns that their trees that were placed in their development at the time of development in the '90s today are so full, there's 3,000 of them, I guess, down at the Heritage Village, and they're so full, and they can't even replace really numbers within, underneath the canopy, and looking for some relief to their numbers of replacement as they die and as they get injured. So in other words, we have a great tree replacement ordinance. I know that people don't want to wait 25 years, but it will look very nice, I'm sure, with all the plantings, the new plantings that will be going, and change is hard. It always is, we know that, we've been through this a long time, those of us that have been on the council years, the change is what's always most difficult, but I do want to make sure, as our residents do, that the trees that were taken down were exactly planned, and my belief right now is absolutely that was all planned, and we approved in our developer's agreement. All right, with that, unless there's any other items to question, is there a motion to approve items A to N on the consent calendar?
Move approval of items A through N on the consent calendar.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we move on to our one and only public hearing this evening. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, mayor, and council members. As is customary at one of the last meetings of the year, the city council holds a public hearing to levy all the special assessments, various assessments, that have been identified over the past year. You will see in the list, in the packet, each individual assessment is listed. The majority of them are related to trunk, sewer, and water supplemental assessments related to different development projects that occurred over the years. Some of those have actually been petitioned. We also have a few various assessments when we have to remove snow, or grass, or weeds, or trees from private property. We've sometimes had to go in and do some nuisance abatement, and those are assessed back to the property, so you'll see some of those on this list as well. So we're asking that you hold a public hearing, every one of these individual properties that have been, that are proposed to be assessed have been notified of this meeting, and then following the hearing, we'd ask that you adopt the resolution approving these special assessments for 2019.
Council, before we open it up to the public, any questions or comments you wish to make?
I'd like to make a comment, if I may, please. It's my understanding, and I want to clarify, that these assessments that are going to be levied by us do include the costs that we've incurred with the two distressed Burger King sites. And I think that's important to point out, because we hear a lot of conversation out in the community about that, and we have opted to take care of those properties, at least cutting, you know, the lawn as much as we can on it, and it's important, I think, that residents know that the city's not doing this for free, that we are assessing them, you know, so that we are not going to be out anything, and, you know, hopefully that'll cure itself soon. Thank you.
Great. Any, council, before we open up anything else? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on this item this evening? Council?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing for the approval of the 2019 special assessments and adopt the resolution approving all special assessments presented in the fall of 2019.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Our staff, any other comments final? We're ready. Council, are you ready to vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That says unanimously. Payments of claims, is there a motion for approval?
I move the approval of payment of claims submitted.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right, I believe, Councilmember Freiberg, did you want to also, I know that was going to be the item you mentioned to me earlier, for council member reports, do you want to clarify or add to that?
Yeah, if I could, that'd be great.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. One thing, I'm going to piggyback a little bit what I just said earlier. One thing that's becoming a problem is the situation we're facing of a couple distressed properties in Eden Prairie, and we seem to be frustrated with a lack of what we can do. I'd like to open the discussion as far as with my colleagues in the council, mayor, and see if we can come to a consensus that we can direct to the staff as far as to find out what can we do, as far as in the case of a distressed commercial property, because some of these have been just going on year after year after year. There's no end in sight. The way I see it, I'm looking at, someday there are going to be arson problems when they sit like that, and I guess I'd like to continue to explore that avenue. Thank you.
Council, do anyone want to throw in your two cents worth? I think he's, Councilmember Freiberg's asked for our input.
No, I think we do need tools to, you know, to make sure that properties don't become a blight in the city, but I think we do have a number of tools already. It's just a matter of utilizing those tools, and I think we pretty much do.
Well, you know...
I'm not sure if you're looking for a new tool, or what exactly you're asking for.
Well, I think, you know, weighing into, and I think, you know, unless Councilmember Freiberg has a different property in mind, I mean, what we spend a lot of time talking about is the two Burger King properties in Eden Prairie. I think those are the two properties that are being referred to, and I think we all know, when they're such visible properties in the community on 4 and 5 and Flying Cloud and Prairie Center Drive, and they've been vacant for a long period of time, we get a lot of questions about that, and our economic development manager, city council members are always asking, you know, what are the future plans for that property, and we've been told for, since they've closed, that they will reopen as Burger Kings. They're working through a bankruptcy issue, and in terms of the tools that cities have in that regard, really, there isn't much in terms of private business activity. But what you do get concerned about is when you see broken windows, garbage on the property, long grass, maybe damage to the property. We should step in, in many cases, we have stepped in, so tonight you approved an assessment for the grass cutting that we've been proactive in doing. We had a couple occasions of reporting the need to pick up trash. I think what's difficult is, I think there was a report of maybe additional damage over the last week, and we'll go back out there as well. We do have some tools with the state building code and some blight tools in our disposal, but frankly, people get a little bit discouraged when they hear the bar that's set in terms of where a building needs to be at to be declared hazardous or condemnable. It's a very, very high bar. I know you, as council members, have heard from our building official, what you may see from Flying Cloud Drive might look like something that should be torn down immediately is not according to the state building code, so we continue to use our tools of influence through our economic development and planning department and our code enforcement tools, and we will keep doing that, but, you know, Councilmember Freiberg's right, I suppose if there's kind of one development question, besides the questions about what restaurant is opening there and the positive development, we see, what, six cranes in Eden Prairie building phenomenal projects right now, sometimes as coupled with what is going on with those Burger King buildings? And, you know, I think we will look again into, are there concerns at the property this week that may come up again? I think we have some contacts at the national level with Burger King, but I think we're aware of what's happening there, and we'll keep chipping away at it, but most importantly, I think we want the public and people listening and watching to be aware that we are doing a lot that we can right now with what we have.
Councilmember Nelson?
It would be nice if we, I don't know if we can put something in place that's different from the state, but especially like in the Burger Kings, but it could be other places too, and maybe it would be along certain streets that are very visible. They've got all these old signs in the window and such that, you know, have just been sitting there. Minimally, they should clean up the windows, and they should put their things sort of in order, you know, saying, at least Burger King coming soon, or for rent, or whatever, but it shouldn't just look like somebody walked away and left what was there the day they walked, which is, I suppose, what did happen, but there should be some responsibility for them minimally hiring somebody to come in, clean it up, keep it looking okay, or else put a for sale sign on it, or something that will let people know this is going to change. It'd also include in some vacant houses that people are holding for development that are along major streets here and there, too.
So you, I think the point you bring up, and we can get back to them, is that they have said for the last several months, I won't say, I won't put words in their mouth, that any day now, we're going to do work on these buildings and they'll reopen, but the any day now has been going on for several months, so Councilmember Nelson, I think we can reach out and say, the any day now has been months, so could you please do some of what you just suggested? And then I think you did, as a council, earlier this year, talk about other vacant homes and distressed properties, and the follow-up to that, you know, if I can have a second, is the, it is our understanding that the one home, because it got down to three homes, I think, mayor, when you wrapped that summary up that night, one of the homes is being rehabbed, another one of the homes is occupied and should be in decent condition, the scenic heights one, if you look at that again, and the third home on Pioneer Trail will be demolished. So we have followed up on your report of concerns with vacant homes on those three homes, but I think your suggestion is great in terms of at least appealing to them, just asking them that you're a national brand, and don't you want to keep your brand relevant and not have people drive by and have that be their thought of what the brand is with some freshening up in the meantime?
Yeah, it should look better than, you know, somebody whoever left that, I don't know if they went bankrupt or what the deal was, but they could have at least cleaned the windows and made it look like a property that was going to have something done to it, not just something that was abandoned with three-year-old sales, you know, thing up on, and it can't cost them that much, because they change those all the time, so there has to be some quick method of cleaning it off the windows and doing that kind of stuff. I can't imagine that overall that would cost any property owner more than a couple hundred bucks to make it look decent while they were figuring out what to do with it.
Councilmember Norrion?
We talked about this, about the private homes a few months ago, I think, and the limitation. I cannot remember, we talked about the commercial property aspect of it. Is it same, like abandoned houses versus Burger King abandoned stores? Are the same rules applied?
I believe that there are a couple different things. I mean, our exterior maintenance codes apply to all types of property, and I think the state building code, in terms of those livability issues, apply as well, but there may be differences, Councilmember Norrion, related to commercial property versus property that you live in.
Yes, maybe something we can do more in the commercial side, especially where it's visible. The second part, I think I heard, was communication to the residents, people asking what's happening. So whatever we do, and we checking, and we cutting the grass, I mean, whatever we're doing, maybe a place, I don't know, in our website, kind of give an update, so people, if they are looking for, they Google it, they can come to it and get the update on that as well.
We can look into that. I think Councilmember Nelson's idea that something at that property, something you see at that property, that something may be happening, is by far the best communication, but we could look into that.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Thank you very much, mayor. I'd just like to state something here, that I'd like a clarification, just because the state threshold is one thing. There's all kinds of precedents in this state right now, that the state law says one thing, but local municipalities do something different, whether it's something age-related or whatever. I'd like to find out if there's something that we could go stiffer than what the state's stature is on something like that. And again, what I'm mostly focusing in on is a couple, is the years I spent on the planning commission in this past year and the council, we hear time and time again with new developments of what we expect out of, you know, developers. We expect a certain level of product to enhance the exterior, but then we're tolerating this without exploring it any further to see what we can do. I guess I'm really getting frustrated with this now. I want to really see if we can get enough support to just find out, do we have to conform totally to the state law on that, or can we go less? When we do it on alcohol, you know, not alcohol, but we've done on cigarettes, other municipalities have done it as far as wages and stuff, has this ever been tested with, you know, a municipality that we expect a little bit higher level from a commercial owner?
Mr. Russell, statutory cities, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, mayor and councilmember Freiberg, we do, as a city, have authority to go beyond the state law that Mr. Getcho referred to, which is the largest tool and for the most egregious properties, hazardous buildings, and we've used that tool, but as Mr. Getcho says, it's a fairly high bar, and it's expensive and time-consuming, even though we assess the costs back to the property. But in, for other matters that don't arise to that level, we have our own, and Mr. Getcho referred to that as well, the exterior maintenance code, which governs everything from chipped paint to holes in siding, and to the condition of the roof, and those kinds of things, and so 10% of the building cannot have chipped paint on it, and otherwise, we have some remedies built in with notice and opportunity to respond. So the kinds of issues that I hear about Burger King, the trash on the property and the lawn grass, we have a specific regulation with respect to lawn grass, we can certainly take a look and see if there are things that could be tweaked in the ordinance to address what you're referring to, to see if we need other tools. All tools come with a cost, of course, in terms of staff time and enforcement, but we can certainly take a look at all of that. Thank you very much.
I think you're right, that we need something about trash on the property, because I think we do do something with some residential places that have too much trash to force them to clean it up, don't we?
We do when we have at that location, yeah.
But for commercials and stuff, you know, if there is that much trash, either we do need to clean it up, because, especially when it's very visible, it cuts back, the other businesses around them don't look quite as attractive having something like that in their midst, and as things get older, I think it might come up a little more often, though typically someone would want to turn over those expensive properties, but there must be something stopping it from happening. So in that meantime, it's to everybody's, and not just people looking at it, but especially the surrounding businesses deserve that we, you know, keep it right, and if we keep charging them for it, and they prefer to pay it that way, then so be it. You know, whenever it sells, we get that money back, so.
Well, before then, actually.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for...
Tonight was an example on the special assessments.
Yeah, thank you, all of you, for the conversation. The only thing, as I was listening to, the idea that maybe the ordinance could be tweaked or looked at just to see if there's some holes that we could fill, and the only thing that strikes me would be, once we have evidence and we know that a property is set vacant for six months, for something, some period of time, this could be residential or commercial, could it kick in something else like a more regular inspection, more, I know right now we're looking at like the 10% painting and if there's shingles missing and things like that, but at least, so maybe, I don't know that we can tighten that piece up, because it feels like we've got those criteria already there, but maybe our eyes get on it, you know, intensely, you know, at that point, and then we begin to assess maybe some kinds of liens or something at that point, because we're aware of all the things going on, including, you know, if windows need to be covered, or, you know, you mentioned the idea of the possibility, what if roofs start to leak, and what if rodents start to get in? I mean, there's just things that, that's, I mean, you can argue at some point, that's their issue, whoever owns that building, the bank or something, but it's also our issue, because it brings down the neighborhood around it, and it complicates any time our commercial and housing stock become deteriorated. So I just wonder if, looking at our ordinance, there could be something that gets triggered when a building is vacant, that we know it's vacant for a certain amount of time. I don't know what that time period is, but that's the only thing I would have you look at, but you all heard our conversation.
I've got one thing, though, with that. There are a number, especially commercial buildings, that may take several years to sell, or whatever, but usually they're kept up. Well, you know, the grass and bushes and everything, and there's no problem with somebody take, or for a home, taking a while to sell. You hear occasional house owners saying, but it's been on the market for over a year now.
So all I suggest is, at that point, it kicks in our inspection. If they go out to this house that's been for sale for a year and a half, it's perfect, nothing happened, it's perfect, but if you go out to that house and there's broken windows, and there's rodents inside the house, and there's shingles missing, that's not okay.
No.
And that's all I'm suggesting, is to kick in at a certain point, a more regular inspection process. Councilmember Freiberg?
I like that approach that you're taking there, something to trigger it. What we're talking right here has been vacant three years. I think I'm pretty close to that number, am I right? Just help me out a little.
I think it's less than two, but, but I don't want to argue, I'm not, yeah, I think it's less than two.
When I was over there the other day, there's, I mean, we're talking rodents that have holes through the side of that. that have holes through the side of that, all right? So what the mayor was just talking about is the real deal. I think that's what's got me a little fired up about it, because I've heard time and time again, corporate, from the corporation, and it's, it's like they rubber-stamp this. Without an escalation, what's to keep it from continually to rubber-stamp? We have a brewery opening up right across the street from it. We want to see them very successful. We're going to hear a whole lot more about this as the crowds go into the new brewery that's going to be opened up, Fat Pants. Frankly, I get real tired of talking about it with people on it, because they see us doing nothing, and that's what they understand.
I think that's good that you brought it up, and it's also good that we are doing a lot, and that we need to get that communication out, so I think that's, that's legit tonight, so.
It would be nice if it gets more visible, that we're doing something, like things get taken care of.
Yeah. Okay, great, great discussion, thank you. Any other items then to come before the council this evening? Okay, if not, I will entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm more than happy to do that.
Say what?
I'm more than happy to do that.
Well, please, go ahead. We would love you to, at some point.
I'm moved that you're in the city council meeting today.
Okay.
Great, thanks. All right, with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.